Good morning, everyone. This, uh, special June 7th meeting of the Grant County Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Please join us in a salute to the flag.
Would I be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the justicery of liberty and justice of all? Let's salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. Let's see a symbol of public friendship among our elected politicians.
Uh, consideration of the agenda.
Uh, sorry. Mister, Mister Chair, I would like to, uh, make an amendment to the agenda and add, uh, between item number four, new business, and item number five, executive session, I'd like to add Commissioner Comets, please.
Uh, is there a second to that?
Uh, no problem with that. I think it's second to the agenda discussion, but I'll second if that's what's required.
Oh, okay.
I think it's Chair's prerogative.
Okay, yeah, let's, if that's okay with everyone, I'd like to have that there, too. Uh, so approval of the agenda has, has changed? Is there a...
I'm sure to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approved. Under, uh, new business, uh, we have, uh, item before us to approve or disapprove of a letter of request to CYFD regarding, uh, juvenile justice continuum position.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, before he was just a letter to CYFD to request the replacement of the continuum coordinator position. And that's the position that, uh, Bianca Padilla used to, uh, hold, and I, I can't remember who all was in office when she held that. It was a, uh, it's a successful program, and, and she was a very important part of it. Uh, she worked with, uh, youth in trouble in that program, um, and I would recommend that you approve the letter and let me request CYFD to fill that position again.
So the issue at hand is that there is a possibility that they won't fill it or ask for them to fill it? Is that correct?
To the best of my understanding. I don't know. Do you know more about it, but...
Yeah, that's what they're trying to do. We want it filled. It saves us a lot of money and attention.
Uh, Mister Chair, I will make a motion to approve the letter of request to CYFD regarding juvenile justice continuing position.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, new, it, new business item B, discuss and select five final either regional medical center board of trustee candidate, uh, applicants.
Mister Chairman, would you help me explain what that has provided for you? She's organized it. She's put, uh, uh, the rankings that you, uh, provided, and she organized them in that, in those tables on the first sheet. And then she provided us the tally sheet so that we can tally up out here your top five candidates. And I thought we could each, I, I recall the last time we did something similar to this, is we each just did it on our own and saw if we had the same five. Would that be okay?
When we did it on our own...
You each, I'll...
We did last time, we added up, uh, rankings.
I think, uh, to do the top five, we'll probably need to do tallies, whatever, I'm recalling we did.
We're not gonna be saying the same thing, but there's no point in each of us doing it ourselves if we're all doing the same math.
I'm just saying the information is in front of you if you'd like to do it as well. And I'll just take a couple minutes to tally up, uh, what I think you have come up with the top, top five based on your rankings.
And see if we agree with that?
Yeah.
Is that, is that...
That works for me.
Okay.
Can we just kind of reset? Well, uh, because we already have the numbers if you want the numbers.
Abby's suggestion at the last meeting was that we do this in a public meeting.
Yes, that's good.
And so, my understanding is if it's advisable with the Commission, if it's acceptable, is she'll tally in and then we'll see if we agree with that.
That works for me. I, I have the tallies for my part.
Under the understanding that Charlie was gonna have that ready for us today.
Um, my, my advice, I don't know if, there, there, the last meeting was a little confusing, but was that, um, we go ahead and tally up out here. It'll take five minutes. Um, if I could just have five minutes, I'll do that for you.
There's any more discussion or disagreement?
So you have the tally done already based on the names on this sheet?
Yeah. Correct. There was no other way to do it, right? So I sat down, you know, the rankings, if someone got a one, I counted it as one point. If somebody got a seven, I counted it as seven points. The lowest score is the preference, right?
Yes, that's right.
So I just added them up. But I'm happy for others to add them up to make sure that I didn't make a mistake.
Well...
Go ahead and do your tally.
I, I'm not sure if we can do it that way because now Commissioner Caston has stepped out, and he did not vote for five, so...
And Commissioner Ramos didn't either. I gave those people a six. I gave, I gave them, I didn't vote for...
Yeah, I just put my top five.
So, so then Commissioner Caston's, and he's got a five, a six, and a seven blank, right? The three people who weren't named there, I gave a six each.
That seems fair.
Right? And Commissioner Ramos has two blank, I also gave them a six.
Does that make sense what...
I felt as though two of them didn't, yeah, more...
I think that's fine as long as they received, uh, the higher number instead of a zero or something. I, I see what you're saying, and I think that's fine.
Of course, a zero would be the opposite.
Would make it change.
Well, and, and to me, Wendell's a doctor, and he shouldn't have been on this list anyways because we have appointments for doctors, and, uh, usually we're, we want him in there and never puts in, so...
I think, but I think the scoring that Harry has used, or excuse me, Commissioner Brown has used to it, it would be fair. Um, so if you all are fine with it, then if you want to just say who your...
So, so at, at the end of the day, I mean, you're not binding to any of this.
That's right.
If you wanna use Harry's numbers, I'm gonna do that.
Just, you've, you've done this, and, uh, if you want to talk about who the, the top five are?
Sure, sure. And interestingly, like last time, there's one outlier who's favored by everybody. Uh, Mister Willmott came in with ten points, uh, which is quite low. Uh, Doctor Gama was next with sixteen. Uh, Mister Trujillo was next with nineteen. Uh, Miss Depres, which I believe is DePree, uh, twenty-one. Doctor Mostella, twenty-three. Mister Blanchard, twenty-four. And Doctor Curry, twenty-six. So there's a whole group clustered in the twenties, and Mister, uh, Willmott and Gama, uh, below that.
And Antonio.
And Antonio also below that, nineteen, so that's where the top...
So the top five?
So the top five would be Mister Willmott, Doctor Gama, Mister Trujillo, Miss DePree, and Doctor Mostella.
So Mister Chair, would please, the Commission, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate these five candidates as the top five candidates for consideration for board trustees.
Second. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Oh.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the top five candidates are Edwin L. Willmott, Raymond Dolman, Antonio, Tony Trujillo, Renee DePree, and Wayne Mostella.
So as a point of clarification, then, um, it's my recollection that we were gonna come up with a set of questions to ask them in the interview. Is that correct?
I got an email with the questions. Do many of you have questions, sir?
Well, I, I, I sent you my questions.
What, what's your recollection, Bernadette?
Yes, we were supposed to send you all by email.
Yeah, we all provided you some questions, um, maybe you'll have to get some from Alicia as I was just talking to her.
And so, let's see, I think you sent us an email, and you, uh, sent us the questions we asked last year, which were pretty similar to the ones we, uh, come up with this year.
And, um, the question is now, is this week to this? Is it Tuesday with the meeting being likely? How many are you gonna allow so many minutes, so many questions to be asked on Tuesday? Last year, we, um, allowed them five minutes.
When, when the question there was five minutes?
Two questions asked in the timeline was five minutes.
So we'll give them the questions, and then they'll speak to that. Is that, does that sound good?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, yes, Mister Chairman.
Um, we do have an extremely, uh, busy agenda on Tuesday. It's, um, a combined work session, a regular session. Uh, may I, uh, suggest that we consider having a special meeting? An appointment of board trustees, I think, is pretty important. Um, and for me, that interview process is gonna be really important, and, um, I would feel better if we weren't rushed on that process. And I don't know what everybody's availability is, but I'd like to suggest that we have a special meeting to do this.
We'll do it on the Thursday. If we can find it here.
I think I am.
Morning of the thirteenth.
No, I'm not a ten. The eleventh is also possible for me, except midday.
What about the eleventh? Does, does everyone wanna do that, or...
I, I, I was mentally prepared for a marathon.
For that one day?
On Tuesday, but I, I understand your point.
Yeah.
I understand your point, uh, that we should do this in a considered way, not be rushed by everything else that's gonna be on our mind on Tuesday.
You don't necessarily have to make the decision on Monday. If you wanna have the presentations on Monday and give you twenty-four hours to think about it, you can still have your regular meeting. Just throwing that out there. I'm not necessarily a proponent or...
Which one are you...
The eleventh?
I don't believe we have...
I have to do an outfit, yeah.
It's just three weeks, I think.
Yeah, but the, the weekend counts.
So you can put it in tomorrow?
She says seventy-two hours. I just wanna make sure we...
The cap 20 meets Monday? Maybe I have to meet somewhere. Is that not in my calendar? Is that in my calendar?
What's a cap 20?
Yeah.
I, I got the...
I didn't even have that.
Well, I'm good with whatever pleasure the board is. I was prepared for a marathon, too, but I don't want to rush this. It is a very important position, so...
We could do ours at the convention, sir.
One Monday? That's by Monday?
All right. All right, does that mean you're... To me, it feels like a bit, a bit of an excessive amount of gyrations, uh, but I know I'm responsible for most of it, so... So I apologize.
Well, I guess, I guess my thought is that, uh, the, the public piece is also important, and so to try to get it noticed and get people to the convention center, I think, is really, might be more challenging than to just have the marathon.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm prepared for the marathon. Will we buy pizza for them?
I'll drink less coffee, but then...
Less or more?
Less.
All right, so, so given the conversation, then I withdraw my suggestion.
Okay. So back, back to the discussion on the questions, um, how are we gonna proceed with that?
I would love to, if she has more for Commissioner Edwards to read the ones that Commissioner Edwards submitted.
If you would like to read hers today, I have them.
That would be great. Otherwise, I have to go through my email.
You also sent us the ones that I'd be, I'd be hard pressed to find, and the ones that we, uh, had last year, and, and the ones that were recommended for this year. Maybe that's the ones you would read.
Uh, so question number one is, what do you think are the five most important characteristics of a successful trustee? Question number two, tell us about a time when you had to challenge the prevailing consensus of a group, how you went about doing so, and what the end result was. Question number three, describe what you would do if you felt strongly about an issue that did not have the support of the other trustees. Question number four, what experience of collaborative leadership do you have, and what role did you play on that team? Question number five, how much time do you anticipate you will have to devote to the board in order to be a successful trustee, and what specific activities do you anticipate spending those hours on?
Yes, go ahead, yeah. Those are excellent questions. Uh, I feel that one of the qualifications I'm looking for, uh, and of course, we're always fighting the last battle, uh, is the ability to, uh, look ahead at the future of healthcare in this country and help the hospital be positioned for that. That's, to me, that's one of the roles of the board of trustees. And a, a question relating to what the candidates see in that regard, uh, would help me evaluate their preparedness to do that.
So can we just add a sixth question on that?
Well, I thought, was it two and three? There were a couple that were almost redundant. I thought we could take out one of those. Uh, maybe it was the going against the consensus and the, what, what would you do if you felt strongly about an issue but did not have the support? And also challenging the prevailing consensus of a group. They're very similar.
So pick one and add yours.
I would pick number two about challenging the consensus and how'd it go. And I would scratch, what if you felt strongly but the other trustees didn't?
We have five candidates. What would you, what would you think about letting them speak three minutes each, and then we could ask, uh, two minutes of questions? Or you want them to all have the same questions?
I thought we, yeah, I think it's imperative that they all have the same questions, and I thought we could discuss getting a written response to these questions. Because we, we had a conversation about getting them the questions in enough time to have a weekend to do a written response.
My recollection that we did discuss that, and then it became a cover letter with their application. And that's what we decided on, and yet they would have these questions to respond to in their presentation, which I think should be five minutes, give them time.
The, the simpler we, I don't want to, your questions are excellent, but I don't want to distract, with their limited time, I don't want to distract them from what they wanna say with, with five specific questions, 'cause I could think of four or five more. Not that good, but four or five more.
So what if we ask them to take five minutes to answer the questions, and then give them two or three minutes to do a personal statement? We just agreed that...
I'm planning on being here as long as it takes to do it, so...
We just agreed that we were...
If it takes more than five minutes, it takes more than five minutes, guys. Okay. We're here to do the job.
Yeah, we need people to do the job.
I agree. So I, I guess the only question in my head is whether we're saying that we are going to ask additional questions in the moment. Uh, other than that...
Clarifying questions.
So that's exactly where I was going, is, is it okay to ask clarifying questions? But I think there's a sense on the Commission, maybe it's only this end of the day, that we shouldn't just extemporaneously ask new questions.
I think just clarifying would be proper for, for a proper interview. That's what we're doing. And everyone gets the same questions and, and stick to those questions, and that's it.
Okay. That would, that, I would like that.
So then, one thing that I would like to do is, um, I don't know that we should limit people's time on the five questions. I mean, we don't wanna, you know, go on for days and days and days, but...
We could even warn them on the rank, but we'll rank them on brevity.
There you go. It's brevity and succinctness.
Or we can go two-minute answers for each question.
That would be the other option.
One minute? One minute, ten, whatever you got.
So I think one minute is too short.
Too short.
Okay.
Do you think Commissioner Ramos said two?
Yes.
So how many questions we have?
Five. So each presentation...
Ten.
Yeah.
Well, I think you just said ten. Got them off at ten. If they don't get one answered?
Right. Ten minutes, they have ten minutes to answer the five questions, and they have three minutes to do a personal statement.
That's fifteen minutes of, listen, I can manage.
I can do that.
So if I were to show the cause of...
I'm thinking what I would want if I was a candidate, I think I'd like to give my, like...
Opening comment first.
Yeah.
Well, the, the order is to have...
We're not gonna tell them what order they have.
We're not gonna tell them what order they have. Then have an opening comment, answer the five questions in ten minutes. Okay.
How's that? So opening comment, three minutes to answer the questions.
And I'll verbally nothing written.
You two have said different things, just to be clear. I was, I was with Commissioner Caston, opening comment, answer the questions, total ten minutes. I heard you say, opening statement, three minutes, answer the questions, ten minutes, total thirteen minutes.
We'll do it ten minutes.
Okay.
I do.
Okay. I can go on, I can go with that. So ten-minute interview includes a personal statement...
And answer the...
And answer the five questions.
A gone! What a good idea. The Lotus Center has a gone.
Okay. Here's a gone.
That was a tap.
Order.
Not a gone.
Mister Chairman, I'm pleased to have Harry's additional question. Commissioner Ramos...
You know, I'm fine with the internal... Um, it was, uh, tell us what you foresee in, as the role of community hospitals in the future of healthcare in this country. How's that? The role of community hospitals in the healthcare of the future in this country. When I was rating the applicants, it, it's clear to me we had different criteria, which is understandable, we're different people. But that was foremost in my mind, I have to say. And, and that explains, I think, some of my different rankings from some of the other commissioners.
So, not necessarily on this subject, but I know I got a phone call from Marissa asking us to canvass the election. When do we need to do that by?
Anytime on Monday.
So we can do it individually?
We have to go in anytime on Monday, so, yeah, you're coming in.
I thought we did that in a public meeting.
Uh, you, well, we'll do the canvas on Tuesday, but we were looking at the extensive, uh, agenda, so, um, we're inviting everybody, as we did last time, to come in. You can go through it.
Oh, to just go through and look?
Yeah, just to go in and look.
But we'll actually approve it on Tuesday?
Yes, sir, definitely.
Okay, I'll give it that.
And that's just so, if you have questions, you can do it at your leisure. Um, and then on Tuesday, we'll go ahead and hopefully get it approved.
Okay, so to just make everything clear, then, um, you're gonna use the first two questions that I had, and the second and the last two questions, we're gonna take out, describe what you would do, and substitute the role, what do you think the role of community hospitals is in the healthcare of the future in the United States?
Very frank, yes.
Um, and then everybody's gonna have ten minutes to answer the five questions and do whatever personal statement they want.
And to dance.
And to dance.
If they wish.
Okay.
So on the first question, not to get into weeds, but, um, the first question proposed by Commissioner Edwards is, what do you think are the five most important characteristics of a successful trustee? I'd like to just say, what do you think are the most important characteristics? They could, they could make it three, or four, or five if they wanted.
Second, sure.
Just to make it more open in it, or is that...
If they think there's only one, I think that's what doesn't work.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the second question would be, tell us about a time when you had a challenge, you had to challenge the prevailing consensus of a group, how you went about doing so, and what the end result was, then, uh-oh, you're gonna have to read that one.
What?
Go ahead, maybe. Sorry. I can read my own script as well.
What do you see the role of community hospitals in the healthcare of the future in the United States? And you're welcome to...
Okay, I think you got the other one right.
Okay. So we'll get these questions to you, Alicia will, and then, and then you can get them out to the candidates? Is that right, Bernadette?
Yes, sir.
And, and would you make it clear to that, to each of those, uh, five, that what the process is going forward?
Correct.
And will you, uh, thank the other ones and let them know that they're, uh, thank them for applying, and can you do that? Okay. Is, uh, does that cover everything? I believe so.
Mister Chairman, before, um, I think we should vote on the top five.
I thought we did.
You already voted, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we think we did.
Yeah.
But, but thanks.
I just didn't recall.
Caution is good. So we voted on the top five. Do we need to vote on these questions?
No.
Okay, we agree, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we are gonna ask the questions, of course, in the meeting, so I do not provide them.
Just to be honest, we wanna provide the questions to them.
We don't wanna take meeting time asking them the same questions over and over, but we want them to be prepared when they come.
Okay, so then I can give them those questions in their letter.
Yes, please do.
And make clear that they have, they'll have ten minutes total, um, to introduce themselves, say what they wanna say, and then answer the questions. And I think it'd be best to leave that open to them, what time, how they wanna balance our time.
I agree.
Because they may have something real important to say that's not answering one of the questions. Is that, okay, let us get this.
I'd like to add my thanks for sending the big old letters. I know that was very professional, and I appreciate it being copied, so I knew it had happened. So, thank you.
Is there anything else in this process we're missing? Because I don't, tomorrow morning, I don't wanna get it, me and Bernadette be working this out. I'd rather be worked out here.
I think...
Okay.
Um, I would like to, um, uh, since Commissioner Brown thinks that, um, Abby has a better written version of his question, may we hear that, please?
Please tell us what you foresee as the role of community, as the role of a community hospital in the healthcare of our future in this country.
Healthcare of the future in this country.
That works for me. I like those prepositions.
Okay.
Okay, if we're done, then we'll move on to, uh, Commissioner Comets.
Mister Chair?
Thanks, Mr.
So I would like the record to show that I did not attend the executive session of the GRNC board of trustees meeting this morning and why. After hearing the reasons why the meeting was being held, I discussed my concerns with the county attorney. Her response to my concerns was that the meeting was potentially unfair, was not unlawful, and that each commissioner would have to make their own decision on whether to attend or not. One of the reasons to have the meeting was to clarify questions around a specific topic related to GRNC's proposal. That clarification could easily have been handled by email, the same as we handled all other last-minute issues regarding the final proposals. Meeting for any other reason looks like a last-minute plea for consideration that we didn't offer either the other suitors, or worse, back-room deal-making. I can promise you that the number one question I get asked about the hospital is what kind of back-room deal? And you can fill in the blank with the wrapped cancer center, the CEO's compensation contract, hiring practices, et cetera. I am not saying that back-room deal-making happens. I am saying that the community thinks it does, and that perception matters. Regardless of its tax status, GRNC is a seventy-five million dollar business asset that provides hundreds of jobs, over a hundred million dollars in economic activity locally, and is charged with providing the very best healthcare possible to every resident in its service area. I don't think there's anyone in this community that thinks we can survive without it. The Commission took on a huge task to objectively evaluate and analyze how to ensure GRNC remains a viable, thriving organization that has the capacity to provide excellent healthcare many generations into the future. I respect, uh, my fellow commissioners' desire to have open communication, but I do not think this is the route that we should have gone. I've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours in the last eighteen months on hospital issue. I'm not willing to risk all that work by having my integrity in questions and ethics questioned over a last-minute meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. As a Commissioner Comets, Mister...
It's not prepared. Uh, I appreciate Commissioner Edwards' comments. Mine are also about the meeting in specific that happened this morning, uh, which I also did not attend. But they're more about the whole process, and they're more about how this commission works as a body. And I've expressed this concern to our chair. I'm quite concerned that we're not acting as a team. And I understand this is really partly the nature of a politically elected body. We come with very different perspectives, different constituencies, we think we have different mandates perhaps. So it's natural that we would go off in different directions. But I think it's worth putting the energy into fighting that entropy and trying to act as a unified body, even if it means not getting what we individually want. In this specific case, what that means is, we've hired a lawyer who is our collective agent in this process. I view that lawyer in this process the same way I view our county manager in other normal processes of the commission. And that agent's job is to take all of our input that we provide him in this case, and with that, to act as a unitary actor, not as somebody who can be, who can have parts of their agenda peeled off, right? We determine a direction and our strength comes from sticking to that direction. When we, with the best of intentions, which I believe we've had, try to negotiate things individually without a group process, I think we undermine the strength that we need as a commission to get what we as a whole body want done. That's why I didn't attend this morning. When I found out our lawyer was not going to be there, and that's the person I'm looking to, to be our agent, it didn't make sense for me to attend. So, thank you.
Other Commissioner Combs?
I do have some comments. I'd just like to thank Alicia and also Mr. Caston, well, Ms. Edwards and Mr. Caston, for doing so well and putting so many hours in this task force, first of all. Thank you so much, because it's, we put in a lot of hours, but you put in a lot more. And we thank you very much for taking the lead and working on this ordeal, because it is big for us. So, thank you. I did attend that meeting this morning. And I did attend that meeting before we went into executive session. I stated that we're there to listen. And we didn't speak, and that's why we're there, just to listen. And I just thought it was important for us to, because this meeting was at their request, and I just thought it was good for open dialogue, even though we're just there to listen. You know, for the future, I really would like to see maybe some kind of committee between the board of directors and the county commission coming together, maybe two of us and three of them, and meet every month to kind of talk things through, if we choose to continue with healer regional, as is. But since they did call the meeting, I was wanting to try and develop a better relation. And that's why I decided to go into that, into that meeting.
So, I attended the open session of that meeting. I did feel as though, once they asked the councils to leave, that it left a quorum without council. And I chose to leave Commissioner Billings and Commissioner Ramos there, and I did not attend the closed session to relieve the possibility of the impression of impropriety of having a quorum potentially negotiating with the board of trustees. So we relieved that completely by me leaving.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Brown, Ms. Edwards, other commissioners. I think I'll maybe be more prepared another time to speak. I think I'd be better prepared saying that I did attend the meeting. A lot of mistakes have been made in this process, and certainly the ones I'm thinking of now are my own recently, and so I'm not above having those being pointed out. And sometimes we agree to disagree, and sometimes I can hopefully hear what you're saying, and we can do things different going forward, or I can. I do think it's important, and you touched on something that's real important to me, because I'm concerned about the manager and the staff being pulled one direction and another by individual commissioners here and there and everywhere. And I think that we need to have more actions as a body, and then that's where they get their direction. It's, the managers been very entertaining to each of us to come in whenever we want and spend as much time with us individually as we want. I hope that she doesn't have a tendency, and she probably may not, but may have, there may be a tendency to get her direction that way, when I think her direction should come as an action of the commission, but also be beneficial and cohesive for our unit, for each of us to get our, and this is where I'm admitting some mistake recently, get our, any future action, not as individuals, but as a commission, we'll decide on some of these things. And I think that would have, the meeting this morning was very beneficial for me. I think it would have been beneficial for the commission, but I think the way that I went about it, in the interest, trying to crowd something in, in the interest of time, it is, I can see why that you didn't attend. Moving on, any other Commissioner comments?
Thank you.
And I guess, yeah, one more comment. So hopefully, maybe we can talk about, as a commission going forward, how we can act as a body and give that direction to the county staff, so that the county manager doesn't start looking for another job somewhere because she feels like she's pulled apart and, and she hasn't expressed it to me that way, but I can, I really believe that's a problem.
And that being said, Mr. Chairman, it's not our job to micromanage. It's our job to kind of guide and look, see how she's doing and respond to her, but it's not our job to micromanage.
Even as a commission, Bob?
Even as a commission, we should be micromanaging.
That's true. That's a good point. Thank you. Any further Commissioner comments?
As Harry said, there are lots of different perspectives, which I appreciate. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mexico's statute, statute of San Antonio, 1978, 10-15-1H.
Mr. Chair, I had moved that we adjourn to, or move into executive session in accordance with the NMSA, 1978, 10-15-1H.
For the...
Disposal of real property.
Thank you.
In accordance with NMSA, 1978.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
You doing the roll call?
Doing the roll call.
Oh, yes.
Do you want me to do it, or?
Mr. Brown?
I understand, I'm moving into executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, I understand, we're going to finish, Mr. Edwards.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
We are in executive session.